Thank you. Andrew, you gonna do roll call from back there?
Did we get, were we successful in the photographs?
Yes, we were.
Good.
Everybody got it.
Right. Ready?
Ready.
Josh Hewitts?
Present.
Rick Gunion?
Present.
Krista Stilwell?
Present.
Mike Reader?
Present.
Mike Kelly?
Present. Approval of the minutes from the last meeting. October sixth. Corrections or addition?
I'll move, we approve the minutes as presented.
Motion by Mike Reader, second by?
I'll second that.
Krista. Roll call.
Josh Hewitts?
I'm staying.
Rick Gunion?
Aye.
Krista Stilwell?
Aye.
Mike Reader?
Aye.
Mike Kelly?
Aye.
There is no public participation, I believe.
No.
Just for the record, there's a new record of means of signing in for public participation and also would include the address of the people who are signing in and a statement about what you can do as you are making your public comments. And also those will be on file with, along with the minutes of the meeting for each meeting, Andrew, so even tonight, put it in the minutes that there was no participation in, in the, in the folder.
And Mr. Chairman, would it be correct to, to say that that policy, that policy and practice is, is similar or consistent with the city council, common council?
Yes, very same.
Okay. Just for the record, we're not, we're not inventing a new, a new thing here, okay?
And I'll add it to the bottom of the agenda template, so it will be at the bottom of every agenda, so they'll be able to read the policy at the bottom when we publish our agenda this morning.
Yeah, we just didn't have time to get that done this time.
Correct, yep.
Okay, safety minute, Todd?
Oh, okay, had to remember, and I came in scrambling, had to use this computer. But I'm a, safety minute, and it actually something that came up today as well, is towards reporting injuries and accidents. And no matter how minor the, you think it is, it needs to be reported in case something comes up later. And the reason I mentioned that it's something that came up earlier today, you know, especially if it's a workman comp case, comms, workman comp case, and you have to go to the emergency room, and then they refer you to a different facility, you have to get and check in with the workman comp insurance, because it's not the same as our medical insurance, so they have had cases that have been rejected, so I have to remind everybody and things like that, but it, it's, the main point is, there is no mi, no injury too minor to report at this point in time, so that we have record and what's going on. And we do have some minor ones, because we go through a lot of Band-Aids, I do know that.
Could I add?
Me personally.
It's actually not, it's actually a best practice to also report near misses.
We have had that too, yes.
If, if an injury might have occurred under a little bit different circumstances, but for some reason did not occur, there was not an injury per se, but it was a near miss, as a best practice, reporting those allows us to be aware of opportunities to make things safer and avoid injuries in the future, so that's also a good, a good thing to do.
Okay.
We go right on to you.
Oh geez, wow, I didn't even get to sit back down. Okay, several update, or a couple of updates, we did check, Andrew, between Andrew and I, and when we had discussed the pilot program, one of the things was that can, can we pay more? They weren't, they said in the thing that they weren't even aware that there was a state statute that says that we could, we didn't have to, but we, we know that is incorrect, or that we could pay more. And, but the other one was that we discussed last week, if we had a, one large amount, can it be divided up between all four utilities? And the answer to that is no, they all have to pay the, the share that is from the formula. So, we'll have to look at that when we get to that point, because wastewater is just gonna be extremely high compared to what it was, but everybody else's is coming down, if we, if we do it the way that it has been discussed. So those two answers were, were, or questions were answered to us on that.
Can I ask a question about your first party of a statement, Todd?
Yes, sir.
My understanding is the stat, the Indiana statute authorizes us to pay a pilot in the amount that would have otherwise been paid for taxes on, on property?
Correct.
But not over that amount, am I correct?
No, I think the statement was that they were, correct me if I'm wrong, Andrew, that they were not aware of a state statute that said that.
And who's saying?
They just say-
State Board of Accounts.
They did say if there was one, that we would not be required to pay more.
Yeah.
They were unaware that if, they were unaware if there was one. However, assuming there is, we would not be required to pay more.
Okay, well, I believe I read it, so I, I'm sure I wasn't dreaming.
No, you were not, I read the same thing.
It's, we're authorized that amount, but not more than that amount.
Anything over and above that would have fallen under a different category, which would be termed alone.
Might be alone, yeah, yeah, okay.
All right.
Yeah, and then the other part was that we cannot divide it equally between all of them, they have to pay what the formula says should, so.
Okay, thank you.
Okay.
So, I have a question, would you be able to make a recommendation to us of what the pilot should be at the next meeting?
Absolutely, absolutely. And actually, I had it with me, and I took it out just before I came over here, I could have told you tonight.
My question is to, can the sewer maintenance building be put on storm since we house our storm water equipment there to take the burden solely off of wastewater?
I don't know if you could take all of it, but I'm su, I'm sure you could take half of it.
But even, even half a percentage of it would take the burden off of wastewater with it going up.
Yeah, yeah, it's another question that we can ask.
Is storm a department?
Yes, it is, and storm, and storm does pay in the pilot.
What's, what's the situation? Is there wastewater items at storm?
No, sewer maintenance does all the storm, storm work.
And we have equipment for storm water that's housed at the sewer maintenance building.
But it's not the equipment that we're paying it on.
No, but the building itself is property taxes, it stores the equipment, so six in one, half dozen of another.
Home offices are-
Yes, there's a lot of regulations for that, though. Um, my, gotta get the square footage. Um, my thought process is, if you do take the home office analogy and you apply it to this, whatever the percentage of the building is being used for storm purposes, we could easily justify that that could be the storm percentage of pilot. So if we're using fifty percent of the building to, to house storm equipment, or seventy-five percent, or whatever, we could take that specific building and apply that percentage and use that for storm to pay for that portion of the pilot.
Right, and then the rest of it could go to wastewater, because see, our, our employees from wastewater do storm water projects too, our wastewater maintenance guys. And again, I know that they're not, but they're housed in that same building.
Right, I mean ultimately, we don't have a storm water superintendent and a storm water department, it's housed in sewer maintenance and, and wa, wastewater, which is all under PJ, so I think because of that, as long as we're allocating appropriate percentages, that would be something that we could definitely do.
Yeah, I'm not saying fifty percent, I'm saying if it's twenty-five percent, it's gonna take part of the burden off of the wastewater budget.
And anything helps.
Right, right.
Yeah, yeah, but I definitely think that that's something that we could do, we just need to figure out what that percentage would look like based on, you know, how much space is being used from, from the different buildings and, and that sort of thing.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah, as long as we can document it.
And I think we could, I mean, we've got a couple pieces of equipment up there, one of them's housed in to stay, to keep it warm, because it's got water in the tanks during the winter, the other one's out in the, the dry storage barn outside.
Yeah, so I, I definitely think we can do that, it's just gonna do a little homework, but we just need to document it.
Okay.
So are we asking Todd to run those numbers then? Okay, so I, my only comment, we could, we could do that certainly, and it's the difference between theory and practice, so if, if the valuation of our newly rebuilt wastewater treatment plant is in the tens of millions of dollars, and the valuation of our full building for sewer maintenance is in the tens of thousands of dollars, it's, it's gonna make a dent, albeit a small dent, but, okay.
I mean, a small dent helps on wastewater too, on the pilot.
Have at it, Todd, okay.
Got it.
Thank you.
Got it. And then, speaking of, on those same lines of increases, we were notified Friday afternoon that our liability insurance and workman's comp and stuff is going up thirteen point two one percent next year for us, so that was one that caught me off guard, well, I mean, it's not surprising with insurance and stuff, but did go up, so it's, it's gonna be, it'll be, let me see, about five thousand for electric, three thousand for water, and about seven thousand more for wastewater.
Who is that through, is that McGowan or IHAP or?
Yeah, McGowan, Todd Jackson.
For liability?
Yeah.
And property?
Yeah.
Okay, not workman's comp?
Uh, yeah, I think our workman's comp's in there too.
Is it really?
Yeah.
Okay.
Um, it's, it's all in there together, because our car, the automobile insurance and stuff, it's all one big thing in there, yeah.
Do they provide an explanation as to why?
Uh, there was some that was there, and I wasn't invited for some reason, Josh, that was, that's been covered as well.
Okay, we can, I can get ahold, I can even ask.
Yeah.
If I find something out, I'll forward it on to the rest of you, I'm sure a lot of it's probably just the market.
I know one of the big increases through there, and they, they, Todd Jackson, because I went over this with him a couple of years ago, because he breaks down the percentages, because he's done all the, all the information stuff, I know one of the big increases on, on the side of it was for, I believe, police liability, was a, was a big hit for him, but everything, and that one went up a lot.
Yeah.
Um, but for us, yeah, it's, that's where we're at right now, it's not a, not a game, not a big game changer, but it's just still thirteen point two percent, when we can't, you know, we don't get away with that stuff, but everybody else seems to be
Sure.
able to do it to us. And then Mike had asked about a budget update, and what I did is I, Becky got this updated for us Friday, and I just printed off the summary of where we're at, you know, from, from revenue and, and expenses, and I'll pass it, I'll have both you pass those around to you guys to see, everything looks really good, at this point, everything's positive, it's in the black, and projected to still be in the black at the end of the year, but if there's any other questions that I can answer on it, just let me know, or if you wanna see another whole department one like we did before, we, we can do that as well.
Anybody have any questions yet?
No. No. I'll have to look over it.
Mm-hmm.
And then Todd had mentioned, from a budget perspective, as we prep the budget from a committee standpoint, he'd like to finish out October considering electric related to harvest and grain drive, like all that different stuff that goes into the month of October before we really finalize plugging those numbers in, to get that prep work done for you guys to review.
I like that. Yeah, we have, or Andrew got, was able to take the, from the end of September and roll it into what we're calling, we have it twenty twenty-six in progress, it's called, because there's a lot of math being done behind the scenes, you're dividing by ten or eleven for the mon, this time, this case will be by ten, then twelve, put the numbers in, and then we just have to go through and fine tune the numbers compared to where we're at this year, so I would think if we can get Octobers in and the second week in November, then we'll be, we'll definitely be ready by the end of November, for sure, and then that meets the other schedules of getting it to the council for their acceptance and stuff like that as well, so I think we're, we'll be in pretty good shape, they, they look pretty good still, from the last time when we looked at them in, what, August, is that when we looked at them, or July? Yeah.
Yes.
And they, they're, yeah, they still look, they still look really good, so.
Now, I do know, we, we obviously have briefly passed over or chatted about some various details, obviously, if there's improvements that need to be at the lagoons, hopefully the two of you have talked about that, but if there's anything else from a budgetary standpoint, albeit small, or that sort of thing, that we feel like we need to add in as a line item or something like that for next year, we should probably be gathering those things, we just talked about AIM conference, for example, we should probably be gathering those things so that we can put those numbers together to have when it's time to go, so.
We call that a wish, wishlist.
Thank you, wishlist, there we go. Write your letter to Santa.
No. Do we, Mr. Chairman, do we have a work session to, scheduled to talk about next year's budget at this point, or are you planning on having a work session sometime in November to talk about the budget?
We can, but if, do you want to? I don't know, they're gonna present us a budget.
They?
Do you, do you think we need to work on the budget, or you wanna, I mean?
Well, I don't know what, who, who they are.
They are Todd and Andrew, I believe, Krista, right?
And they're gonna present-
I mean, Todd and Andrew are doing the mid, the bulk of getting it prepared, because there's not any major changes happening to it structurally or anything like that, right?
Right.
So I think the understanding that I had is that they would present it to all of us for review, and then we would discuss, but if we feel like we need to have a work session, the time where we would need to do it would probably be that first meeting in November.
And I'm expecting a, a budget update from you three folks, right? On where we are on this year's budget?
I mean-
Per, uh, per line item, or just for overall?
I don't know, what you got planned?
Well, I just gave you the overall right now.
Yeah, through, through September.
Through September. But-
So I'm confused who's driving the bus here, so forgive me.
What do you mean?
Um, well, each year previously?
Yeah.
We had reviewed the budget in fairly discreet detail.
Yeah.
Do we plan on doing that as a group this year, or are we just hearing an update from you three?
We did in August, we gave you a mid-year review in August, but
Yeah, yeah.
This year, what we'll do, and we did it last year, but I know where you're going, Rick, I would prefer to have a work session, I can explain everything, and then come back to the next meeting and approve it. You know, if that, if that's the case.
That was my, that was my thought.
Yeah.
And as I recall, I don't, I don't memorize this stuff, but I believe Indiana statute authorizes us to have what is in essence, a couple of things we don't have, or haven't had in the past, essentially a rainy day fund for utilities in general, and a depreciation fund, which I'm not, I'm not certain, but I believe that that's an expectation that we, we manage that, so we haven't had those in the past, per se, and I, I wanted the board, the ability for the board to talk about, what does the statute allow us to do? What do we choose to do for twenty twenty-six, do we wanna change or add to the budget for twenty twenty-six? If so, we wanna be talking about that now, so it's not, it's two different topics, it's where are we in today's budget for this year, and where do we wanna be in twenty twenty-six? And, and to me, a work session would be ideal to kind of mull that over, I, I don't know what your thoughts are, but.
When you say a depreciation fund, what are you referring to, because we have them for each of the utility departments?
And a construction fund.
We have the construction fund and depreciation, so what type of depreciation are you referring to?
You talking end-of-year depreciation? Or?
Let me preference that with what I said, I don't have the state statute memorized, okay, so talking about depreciation, having depreciation in the right amounts, right places, I don't know how visible that is on the, the current budget, but I'll look at it.
I guess, what I'm, I'm a little confused on the difference between a work session and a regular session, because when he presents in the first meeting in November or whatever, he presents the budget that they've come up with, and we're gonna discuss that then.
And which, is that twenty twenty-six budget they come up with?
Twenty twenty-six budget.
Proposed budget.
Before we approve it, we'll be discussing it, I would assume, and so to have a regular work session for that seems kind of like duplication to me, I don't know.
Well, then let's just talk about it in our normal meeting, and I'll be prepared in November to talk about a rainy day fund addition and a depreciation fund across the board, not by department, so, and we can either choose to do that or not, so.
I, I would just, I'm gonna have the discussion as part of the meeting, and it has to be, it's recorded anyway, so.
That's fine, okay.
But then if you go to a work session, then you can't make a decision, am I not right? In a decision?
Yeah, I mean, one, once you go into work session mode, it's a little bit less formal, you're still publishing it, you're still having it recorded and everything like that, but generally speaking, if you're going to make decisions, I would just not categorize it a work session, I would just categorize it a meeting.
Yeah.
Yeah.
In a work session, then there's a distinction, there would be no voting on any decisions we make.
Yeah, yeah.
So I'm fine with doing it during a public meeting, skipping the work session entirely, it's fine, okay.
Next item, Todd?
Uh, the, I have the performance evaluations all done, ready to get, not done, ready to go to the department heads, and I'll get those out to them tomorrow, and ask them to have them completed by the following Wednesday, so that we can get the ball rolling and, and get them looked at. So I guess my question is, who do you want me to send mine to for that, do you want it to go to all the board members, you, and you take care of it for that part of it?
Um, send it to me, and I'll make copies and send it out to them.
Okay, okay, but yeah, we was able to get that, and then get it, get it unlocked and, and get everything ready, so they're ready to go, and I will, as I said, I'll send those out to the department heads tomorrow.
Um, quick question to some of the new guys, the, the performance reviews, those are used for, they're just done annually, or they, is that how you base raises, or?
We started them last year, Josh, was the first year, and what we do is, there is a scale on there, you'll, you'll see it when it's on there, there's so many, I think there's five categories, and the radar scale of one to four, and there's, the biggest emphasis on there is attendance for
Okay.
for un, or excused absences, and that is, that is a total of fifteen out of the thirty-five points, and then it's broken down into a scale, if you fall within so many points, you get X percent of a, of your annual salary.
Okay, that's what I was-
As a bonus, and last year it was one percent, and this year it was budgeted to, for the maximum of one point five percent.
Okay, so it's for year-end bonus?
Yes.
Ah, okay, thank you.
Yeah, and then there's a range based on how you score of where you fall for your year-end bonus.
And on the sheet, you'll see it, it's all explained, so when we give them to the employees, they can look, here's your total points, here's your annual salary, here's what your
Thank you, I understand.
Your bonus is gonna be.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Would you mind sending him a copy of that, so he can take a look at it?
I'm gonna send it to Mike, and he's gonna send it to-
Oh, that's true, we're gonna have it anyway, never mind, scratch that.
Don't worry about it.
Um, so yeah, that was, that was a chore, because I had to get in and actually edit each one, every one of them individually and stuff, but I was able to get it done, so.
Yeah, and this, this was a project that was done in accordance with our HR consultant that worked alongside them to help them formulate it all, and get it all figured out about points and what we were ranking, and those types of things, so.
It was probably a good work in pro, progress for at least eighteen months before we issued the first one.
I'll bet.
There was, there was a lot of back and forth and changes and stuff, and so we were able to get it, and this is our second go-around with it.
Very well.
All right, anybody have anything for me?
I do not.
You have a couple of things here on water that needs sign?
I don't have them, no.
Task orders?
The task orders, it's in the packet?
Nobody gave them to me.
Okay.
From Westler's, not ringing a bell?
Wellhead protection.
Nobody gave me copies to sign, or sent me an email on it to sign them. Do you, then you still have them, I gave you the originals.
They're right here?
Oh, there they are, right there.
Oh, Todd.
Two weeks ago, what do you expect?
I can't remember, yeah, that's a long time.
That is a long time.
That is a long time. Yeah, I did, all right, well.
It's all coming back to you now, Todd, you remember.
Yeah, I remember they gave them to Andrew. Sorry about that.
That's all right.
Well, apparently we have two task orders from Westler, one for wellhead protection, and the emergency response plan that was done.
And based on, from my reading, just to make sure, because this would be the first time I've been through these types of task orders, that because of the size of who we serve, we have a couple of required things that are a part of our emergency response plan, as well as a risk and resilience assessment, hence why this task order is coming, because it's time for us to do one of those.
And there's a not to exceed amount on both.
Yep, okay, got it.
And I cannot tell you the last time that we even hit the, the not to exceed amount on either one of these agreements.
And they're relatively small fees, so, okay, and Westler's, who's always, who's partnered with us to do these?
Yes.
They also do our MS four, which is in here through the wastewater.
Okay.
So I guess the question is, would be your recommendation that we sign these task orders?
Yes.
Task order number twenty-eight and
Twenty-seven.
Twenty-seven.
I've been a motion to approve and sign task order number seven, twenty-seven from someone.
So moved.
Second.
Motion and second? Then we'll have a roll call.
Krista Stilwell?
Aye.
Josh Hewitts?
Aye.
Rick Gunion?
Aye.
Mike Reader?
Aye.
Mike Kelly?
Aye.
Motion for acceptance of task order number twenty-eight.
Thanks, Mike.
So moved.
I'll second that.
Motion second. Roll call.
Josh Hewitts?
Aye.
Rick Gunion?
Aye.
Krista Stilwell?
Aye.
Mike Reader?
Aye.
Mike Kelly?
Aye.
So those will be coming around to be signed. There are two copies that need to be signed, or just one, Andrew?
There's just one. Oh, one more thing, while I'm up here, I just found out on my way here that, that little lift station that we have that's over there towards our place, there's two pumps in there, they both went out, and last time we had issues there, when, the place that I'm living now, when the basement flooded, and that's how I ended up getting the place, with time, when we went in to redo some things there, we actually put in an overflow line from that manhole, all the way out to the street, that's the only thing that's saving us right now, is that overflow line, so.
We didn't have a pump on the shelf out here?
Hmm.
So how, how did you know, how'd you learn that the both pumps went out?
Well, it's been about, probably two, three months ago, we had some issues over there, and went back, and then I was there, and they pulled both pu, both pumps, and they both, for somehow, ended up with a small rock in them, they weren't turning, they were, they were popping the breakers, so everything's been working fine, but yesterday there was a trouble call come out, or an alarm going off, and they found that both the breakers, they were going into overload, so this afternoon they went in and pulled them, and they will start up, they'll run for about ten seconds, but they're on a forty amp breaker, and they're pulling fifty amps, trying to start up.
Get a bigger breaker.
It's a good idea.
Doesn't, I mean, normally- Doesn't, I mean, normally in a lead lag dual pump situation like that, you would have a red strobe light on that electrical panel.
Oh, there is, and an alarm.
Does it go off when the breaker trips?
Yep.
Okay.
Yep, that's, and well, one of the neighbors called in, uh, to, uh, dispatch. And that, and dispatch dispatched our guys out there. We had, uh, the wastewater, wastewater solid on their skater. And then they called, they thought, they didn't know what it was because it was alarmed, so they thought there may have been a house fire, so they dispatched the electric on-call guy as well. And he said, I'm surprised you didn't hear it as loud as it was from your place, so. But yes, it all does that and it was one of the neighbors that notified us that it was going on too.
Okay, so it kind of worked like it should. We just we, it was a new experience for us responding to the alarm and
And see, and I don't know if the alarm goes off if both pumps go out or if it's just the one pump, but both pumps went out.
Well, can you have somebody look at that?
Absolutely.
Because in a lead lag, uh, dual pump redundancy thing like that, wh- what you want to have is if either pump goes out, the alarm goes off.
Yeah.
You don't wait till both go down and then
And they both.
Somebody downstream's basement gets backed up and you don't want to be that guy, so.
You're exactly right. But, uh, but we put in a six-inch overflow line from that manhole and that's what's, that's what's getting, that's what's saving.
In a heavy rain, might not be enough.
Uh, it's, it'll, it'll take a lot
Okay.
with that, so.
So, uh, you, you will have, can you record back, uh, if you have someone look at that, if it's a single, either or? Okay.
Absolutely. Yeah, because that's a great que- I didn't, I didn't think about it because I knew, I know the one time that, uh, when it was just, we thought it was just one, it wasn't, so. Um, yeah, it needs to be one. And like you say, in a big rain event, we're gonna need, we could need both of them.
Well, previously, before that was reconstructed, they weren't running, uh, lead lag. They were, there was two pumps, but they weren't, they weren't doing the work of two pumps. They were
No, because they were going into one single pipe.
Correct.
And when we redone it, we put, um, they both have their own
Independent.
Independent pipe and stuff. So, yeah, because one was fighting the other one.
We already had one situation that was a surprise there, so let's, let's double check on the, on the alarm thing. Okay.
Will do.
Great.
Will do.
Good update.
Yeah, because I don't want to be the the one file in the torque line.
No. You don't want to remodel that basement again, just done two years ago, so.
You're exactly right.
Were you gonna provide an update on the, uh, Armstrong Street Bridge Water Renovation Project that was apparently done recently?
Yes, they, they have completed the, the job. They went through and did cleanup, got road, roads patched and everything like that. Right now, Chase and his guys are working on the punch list because I went by there this morning and real close to Jackson Street, and I don't know if it was from the rain over the weekend or what, but there's a washout spot and you can see underneath the sidewalk, so that's being put on the punch list to get those type of things taken care of. But they have right now, uh, packed up, got all their tools and everything out of there, but they know they're gonna have to come back and, and take care of some issues. But that work is done. All the, uh, um, residents are on the new system out there and it actually went pretty well.
So the, uh, the schedule extension we, uh, approved in our prior, our last meeting, uh, they did meet that, that extended date.
Yeah, because it really only gave, if I'm not mistaken, it really only gave them an extra week because it was already
They only, they had four extra days or five extra days.
Yeah, they did make that.
They made it. Okay.
They made it, yes.
I, I noticed all their equipment's gone except for the comeback to the punch.
And I think they're still gonna have to do a little bit more yard work and things like that.
Oh, yeah.
But, uh, they definitely have to fix that washout underneath the sidewalk there at that, uh, the house right there on the corner, that one they just redone there on the corner.
Yeah.
There's some other things on, you know, let things settle down and it might be spring that they have to come back and finish up and see and stuff like that.
Yeah, okay.
Okay, but yeah, they're all done.
Any other questions for Todd while he's up?
Um, could I, could you give the board an update on the ADA assessment at the Lagoon?
Sure. Rick, Rick and I met just a little, a little bit ago and, uh, I didn't bring my copies with me, but, uh, there, there's some things on that list that we're gonna look at taking care of and they're, they're viable. Uh, some of them are, what, a couple of them were no access to like the boat ramp, stuff like that. We don't allow boats, so we're just gonna go out with a backhoe and we're gonna fix those problems. And that way it won't be an issue. We do have a bench that has a washout spot that we do need to take care of so people can get down there and not fall in and things like that. But, uh, and what was the other one, Rick, was, uh, picnic, ADA accessible picnic tables? I'm gonna check with the parks to see what they're gonna do because if we got dinged, they're gonna get dinged and they may have prints that they can be made and it would be a good winter project for a couple of people to, to work on something like that, but, um, and the other
Remediation to the wetlands, uh, observation deck?
That's gonna be a doozy, but we got a plan.
Little bit of an engineering project there, but nothing out of our league of, uh, capability.
No, not at all.
So we're, the main thing I wanted the board to know is we, we have reviewed the list and we have an action plan. Um, the, the schedule for the action plan extends into next spring. Um, we're, we're way ahead of the expected
Twenty-year plan.
Twenty-year plan.
Yeah.
But by, by next spring it'll be taken care of.
Yeah.
Uh, so we are, we are moving forward on, on ADA compliance at the Lagoons.
And there's some things where there's some conduit coming out from one of the pavilions. We're just gonna take a side grinder, grind that off and things like that. It's really the observation deck that Rick mentioned is gonna be the big thing, but I don't, we're not talking what, three, four thousand dollars maybe to fix something like that. And the rest of it is just labor, no, no time and, or just labor and time.
That's what I was gonna ask because I know at the beginning of the year, we were talking about the gate and all that sort of thing. We were talking about maybe needing additional monies to go towards the Lagoon, but you feel comfortable from a budgetary standpoint that we have.
Right now we have it, but if, I don't know if we can get to it to do that this year, so we might have to carry some over for next year to do something like that.
That makes sense.
Yeah, and I, I think when we get to the budget, my, uh, request will be that we um, don't zero out the Lagoon's budget at the end of the year just because we didn't spend the money this year, but we accrue it next year toward the access gate cost and other costs that we, we might anticipate. Um, so that's, that's the direction there.
Should we separate?
The ADA
ADA expenses from
You know, I, I don't, I don't think we're talking twenty-five hundred dollars in actual expenses. There's some in-kind labor that will be allowing people to work on, so as far as expenses, uh,
I think, if anything, I would, I would say that we put a line item in there for gate and security and have that in there. We put that so that we know exactly where it's going and then leave the other line item where it's at to take care of the things.
Yeah, but as far as the line item for ADA, I don't think that's
Oh, no, no, just take it out of the regular line item, something like that.
Okay, yeah. That'd be my, my agree, I agree.
And do we, do we have to do encumbrances or anything like that? Like they have to do a city budget to carry money over? I didn't know if there was a process. Okay.
No.
Anything else? Thank you, Todd.
Thanks. Thank you.
We have some claims. We have any additional claims tonight? Any questions about any of the claims?
None.
Motion to approve by someone.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the claims as presented.
And I'll second.
Rick and then Krista. And then roll call.
Josh Uetz?
Aye.
Krista Stillwell?
Aye.
Rick Gunion?
Aye.
Mike Reader?
Aye.
Mike Kelly?
Aye.
Uh, like the, the new budget. We will be talking about the new budget in twenty, the twenty-six budget next month. We don't want to lose sight of those holdover items. So, uh, we need to probably try to start to get some of those off.
We're nearing the end of the year, so the employee handbook probably needs to get back on everyone's radar.
Yeah. That would, it just, there were so many other things on the, on the screen.
Correct. Oh, yes. I'm not saying, yeah, I get it.
And, and I would, I would add, I'm not a farmer, nor have I ever been a farmer, but I, I am painting my house and so as weather turns bad and I have more time to work on stuff like this instead of painting my house, then I'll get to it, but
Sure, yeah.
Situation being what it is, so thank you for reminding though.
I just think the goal would be to make sure that can go into place January one, so that time will go very fast.
Yeah. Uh, anything else for the good of the cause tonight? If not, a motion for adjournment.
So moved.
Rick, Rick got it.
He's ready to go. I'll second that.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you all.
Thank you.